Good evening. This regular city council meeting, June 3rd, 2024 is called to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Radner? Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
And Councilmember Whitehead?
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. These are routine items presented for city council approval without discussion. Any council member can ask to have any item dropped from the blanket motion and approved separately. A regular city council meeting minutes for May 20th, 2024. Library meeting minutes for April 16th. Parks and Recreation meeting minutes for March 20th. Budget to actual report for a period ending March 31st. Third quarter fiscal year 2023-24 investment report. Approval of pay application number six and change order number two for the 2023-24 miscellaneous concrete project, M 754, to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan, in the amount of $99,335.49, and a credit of $7,330.20 respectively. Payment of invoices from OHM Advisors for GIS DWAM grant, the West Nine Mile Road Design, the Eight Mile Booster Station rehabilitation, for the total amount of $25,195.75. Payment request from Newman Smith Architectural for architectural services on the Event Hub and municipal services move. Request authorization to bid the 2024 block pruning project. Approval of pay application number two for the 2024 sewer lining project, M 763, in the amount of $113,369.80. Approval of the pay application number one for the 2024 water main replacement project, M 764, in the amount of $324,048.36. Approval of pay application number one for the water service line hydro excavation project, M 736, in the amount of $44,081.10. Approval of final pay application number seven for the 2022 water main and road reconstruction project, M 737, in the amount of $30,000. And approval of final pay application number two for the 2023 sewer lining project, M 749, in the amount of $5,000. Oh, new and renewal licenses submitted for June 3rd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Special licenses, item seven on the agenda. Request for special event license and waiver of application fee submitted by the Juneteenth Committee for the annual Juneteenth Celebration. Mark your calendar, June 19th, 2024, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Everybody is invited. Is there a motion to approve the request?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. City Attorney has two items for us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. On June 16th, 2014, Comcast entered into a video service local franchise agreement with the city of Oak Park pursuant to 2006 Public Act 480, for Comcast to provide video services in the city of Oak Park. That agreement expires on June 16th, 2024. In accordance with the instructions set forth by the Michigan Public Service Commission relative to the act, Comcast submitted a request for the renewal Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement to the city on May 10th, 2024. The act requires the city of Oak Park as the franchising entity to approve the franchise agreement or notify Comcast if the agreement is incomplete within 30 days after the submission of a complete franchise agreement. The city's attorney's office has reviewed the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement and has determined that it is complete and recommends that the council renew the agreement with Comcast for a period of 10 years from the date it is issued.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Motion to approve the resolution for the proposed renewal of Uniform Local Franchise Agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Company. Is there a motion?
Still moved?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you unanimously. Item B for our city attorney.
Sprint Spectrum Realty Company entered into a lease agreement with the city of Oak Park on July 7th, 1997, for the placement of cellular equipment on city-owned property at 14710 Kingston Street. This is the Water Tower property. Sprint Spectrum has since been acquired by T-Mobile and has requested that the city consider a proposed lease extension agreement for a period of three years with all our lease provisions remaining the same. Three years is the maximum amount of time that the city council may approve a lease of city property without a voter referendum. Sprint Spectrum is currently paying a monthly rental rate of $4,613.93 with annual proposed rent increases of 4% per year. The city attorney's office has reviewed the proposed lease extension agreement and confirmed that it meets the requirements of the ordinance and the city charter and recommends approval by council.
Thank you. We need a resolution about the proposed amendments to the lease agreement with Sprint Spectrum Realty Company Limited.
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, questions?
This is the same agreement that we, yep.
That we had before. So it's just continuing, correct? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. 9A1, I'm going to take, which is a resolution establishing Juneteenth as a recognized Oak Park city holiday. I will not read the full resolution in front of you, councilmembers, but I do want to read the last part of it, which, if approved, this would be four letters of understanding for our four collective bargaining units, which would officially add Juneteenth on our end as a city holiday. It would recognize the historical significance of the Juneteenth Independence Day. It supports the continued celebration of Juneteenth Independence Day in observance of the end of slavery as part of the history and heritage of the United States and encourages all citizens to participate in the Juneteenth Jubilee and celebrate African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equality, and a strong sense of community in the city of Oak Park. It designates June 19th, 2024, as the first Juneteenth Independence Day in which all of the city of Oak Park non-emergency facilities and offices will be closed and will be observed as an official paid holiday for all city of Oak Park employees. In the letters of understanding, the administration has negotiated with all the bargaining units I mentioned a moment ago within the city, adding Juneteenth, June 19th, to the existing list of recognized and observed paid holidays going forward are hereby approved. It establishes Juneteenth as an annual observed holiday for the city of Oak Park forever, more now, as long as the agreements are in place. And all resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, are hereby repealed. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and adoption. Councilmembers, this is requesting that, as I mentioned a moment ago, this Juneteenth, so June 19th, 2024, would be the first established paid city holiday, and we would be close to the public on that day.
Okay.
Still moved?
Thank you. Second. When he first came to city council, Councilmember Sean Whitehead said, "Do you think we should have a celebration of Juneteenth in the city of Oak Park?" And I said, "Councilmember Whitehead, we should have had it 10 years ago." Yes, it's a fabulous idea. And he made it happen with committee, and we couldn't be more pleased with the celebrations that we've all seen. Ours is one of the better ones, I might say, with all due modesty. And it's a delight to get together and celebrate together. Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Just one question. Which other cities in Michigan recognize this as a federal holiday?
I do not know, Councilmember, I do not know what other cities. I know there are other cities. I believe the city of Detroit is one, but there are others. I do know that the federal government, the state government, and Oakland County government recognize this as an official paid holiday as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes. Unanimously, we are a Juneteenth city. Bravo. Bravo. A big moment, I think.
And councilmembers, I do want to just add, on the administration's end of it, I am going to be asking, although I can't make it mandatory, I've been told, I am going to make Juneteenth this year a voluntary day of service for city employees. So I can't force them to be here, but I can ask them to serve alongside and volunteer with me. So that is going to be happening this year. 9B1, I am going to call on City Clerk Ed Norris to handle, please.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and council, I have a resolution before you tonight authorizing the temporary relocation of Oak Park Voting Precinct 14 for this coming primary election, August 6th. We're in a position where Ferndale Upper Elementary, in Ferndale School District, is the polling location for Oak Park Voting Precinct 14. It is going to be unavailable for us this summer. And due to construction, the Ferndale School District has offered the use of the new Ferndale Lower Elementary School, the new school, to accommodate this precinct 14 for the August 6th state primary election. Therefore, we would have actually all three of our Ferndale precincts in the new facility for this election, and this election only. So we have this resolution authorizing the polling location change before you, and that is our request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion authorizing this relocation of Voting Precinct 14?
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We have done this before, correct?
We have.
Okay. Can this be voiced, vote? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. 9C1, I would like to ask our city engineer Kara Grissimer to join me at the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. City Manager, before you is a resolution supporting the Local Road Improvement Matching Fund Program for the Nine Mile Road Project. The Oakland County Board of Commissioners has approved our application for funding for the Local 2024 Local Road Improvement Program, or LRIP. The poor conditions on our road create an impediment to economic development in our community and diminish the excellent quality of life that our residents expect. They created this matching fund program to assist municipalities by offering limited funds targeted to road maintenance and/or improvement projects on roadways. We selected Nine Mile Road between Cloverlawn and Greenfield as our project for 2024. This project will remove the asphalt surface and repair some of the base concrete as needed and then replace the asphalt surface. As part of the grant, Oak Park agrees that non-eligible funds such as administration, coordination, engineering, permit fees, right-of-way acquisition, and construction engineering services will not be paid for by these funds. We were awarded $68,980 as part of the program matching funds. And we recommend that you accept these funds in the resolution.
Okay, and we are matching funds?
Yes, the project is expected to be a little over a million, $1 million or so, so there will be plenty of Oak Park funds to go around.
Is there a motion for this resolution supporting this matching fund program for Nine Mile Road?
Still moved?
Okay. Discussion or questions? It is, can you repeat? It's Nine Mile between Cloverlawn and what?
Greenfield Road.
And Greenfield.
The portion of Nine Mile that did not get constructed last year.
Right, yes. We, if we had the money, we would fix everything at once, but with sort of piecemeal. And this part of Oak Park's been waiting patiently and impatiently for some improvements.
Exactly, yes.
So that would be lovely. A roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carried, thank you.
9C2, I would like to ask Director Kimberly Maroney to join me at the podium, please.
Very excited about this one, Kim.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Tungate, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. In front of you tonight is a contract to work with the city of Southfield in purchasing welcome signs. The city of Southfield will purchase one, the city of Oak Park will purchase another. It will go on Greenfield Road, one bookending Nine Mile and Greenfield Road, the other one near Eight Mile. And that's part of the first effort for us to beautify Greenfield Road. And we've been working with Southfield for about a year now in designing the signs. The city of Southfield paid for the sign design in hiring a contractor. And in partnering with them, we are asking that city council approve us purchasing this sign for the amount of $16,345. And we have funding in the major street fund account. We will be doing, just for future reference, we're also working on landscaping as well as adding banners.
Madam Mayor, could I ask?
Yes.
Director Maroney, so do, can we put up an image? I don't know if it's possible to...
Yep, Benny has it.
There we go.
There we go. Kind of hard to see.
Too small.
There we go. That one's better. So it's the number four in the bottom right-hand corner.
Yep. All right. And residents at the end of the meeting, come on up and check it out. So we need approval of the Greenfield Gateway Sign in the amount of $16,345?
Correct.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Greenfield Road can use a lot of beautifying. Agreed?
It just, it seems a little premature, since there's nothing happening quite yet on Greenfield, so it's, the sign says it's a gateway. And my question is gateway to what?
It's gateway to the city of Oak Park and the Southfield. And there is the developments that we've had on our side of Greenfield and that section between Eight and Nine Mile with the FedEx, the Foot Locker, and we'll have some additional developments hopefully in the near future. And then also on the Southfield side, the Northland Center is actually coming quite a ways. They are hoping to start leasing up next spring, so... It's pretty.
Any further comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, one more thing. I just want to make sure that everyone is reminded that this Thursday, in this room, at 5:00 in the lobby out here, and then at 6:00 in this room, we will be hosting the city's annual State of the City address. I will be speaking and introducing the mayor, who will deliver the State of the City address on behalf of the city.
And two surprise things are going to come. Come Thursday and find out what they are.
Big announcements.
Big announcements.
So with that, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at the call to the audience section. Would you like to read the...
Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Oak Park does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content, thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a city council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to germane, to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal attacks on persons or institutions. Please remember, there is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Thank you so much. Anybody like to come up? We have a card, a couple cards.
I have, yeah, several that would like to speak. First, Ken Sherman.
Good evening, council. Since I won't be here at your next meeting, yay, I'm going to get my zings in today. I'll be in Florida. I feel like I'm preaching to the choir. We always say, "We listen to the residents," but to me, things don't happen. I had brought up, when we got our last utility bill, there was a flyer in there that was about Oak Park Library Events on one side, and I suggested for economic purposes that both sides be used for informational purposes. Well, we got our bill today, yesterday, and of course, here is a one-sided flyer that could have been used for both sides. So I point that out to you again, and hopefully somebody will see the benefit of using the mailers to do two-sided mailings. The other item, which I brought before, is the appointed city council member for the Recycling Commission. Whoever he or she is has not attended our meeting since I brought this to your attention, and I would ask city council to consider appointing a different representative to attend our monthly recycling commission meetings. And my last point is, GFL, our trash company, notified their employers and employees on May 29th in a letter that they were discontinuing residential trash pickup to among communities, Oakland County, and it's effective July 1st, where they're going to be changing from GFL to Priority Waste. So I would encourage the city to notify the residents before July 1st of this changeover and to give us contact information like they did for GFL if we have trash pickup issues. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have a card from Sherri Curry. She would like to speak.
Do you want to spook to it? Speak to the virus? No?
Is that trash?
Yeah. Yeah, just one minute. We're going to hear about the trash change. No, we can't. Never mind, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to...
Holler into the mic.
I'm sorry. I'm here to just get an update on my last complaint concerning the neighbor's house next door to me. I haven't really seen any improvement, but I just wanted to get an update.
Yeah, we're on it.
That's pretty much what I...
I do, I know I'm being told I can't respond, but may I just say? We're on it and then some, because this is unacceptable. Thank you for bringing it to our attention again.
Thank you.
Kristy Gardner?
What's her name? I need to get her on commission. She's a lot...
Good evening, everyone. I am Kristy Gardner, and tonight I'm also joined by Regis Maria. We are here on behalf of our children, as well as all of the children and families that participate in the Oak Park Spring and Fall Soccer League. Specifically, we would like to address the issue of practice fields for our kids. I think that we both agree that whether our kids are soccer stars in the baking or they just love to play soccer with their friends, they, this is their favorite sport. They look forward to it every spring and fall, and they anxiously await every season, win or lose, just so they can get out there and do their best. And we personally, our, my children have been participating in Oak Park Soccer since the fall of 2019. They love it that much. I've tried to sign them up for other things. We have to do soccer every year, so it's, which is great. We love it as well. But not only are we soccer parents, we are also soccer coaches. We step up because there's a need of coaches, and we love our kids, we love the kids in the community, and we don't mind doing it for them. Personally, this, I just finished my fourth season so, coaching soccer. I'm not a soccer coach, but I would do whatever it takes to make sure that our children have what they need, so they can enjoy the sport that they love. This past spring season, more than ever, though, it has become painfully obvious to us that our children are at a competitive disadvantage, mainly because we do not have the adequate practice fields that we need in order to prepare them for the games. We, we just don't. And we recently learned that both Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, who are a part of our league, actually practice on the field that we, we play the games. We had no idea, and we're wondering why, you know, they're so comfortable out there, and it makes sense to us now. For the last few seasons, we have had access to Key Park. It's a big field, it's a lot of space, but the problem is, there's no lines on the field. There are no goalposts, and it's hard to tell kids, okay, tell a bunch of seven-year-olds, "Stand right here, we're going to learn what to do when we receive the ball. Imagine there's a big circle right here. They're looking at me like I'm crazy. I'm looking at them like, please understand." And it's a big mess, but it's okay. We keep going anyway. And so what we are asking is simple. We would like properly lined practice fields marked accordingly to the league rules, including two goals on each field for every fall and spring season going forward. It's really important, we watch our kids every season play in these games, and by the end of the season, they are defeated. And we feel defeated, not only as their coaches, but as their parents, that we're doing as much as we know how to do, but without those practice fields, I, I just don't know how we can teach them what positions to be in, when it's, you know, how to move, where to move, what spacing is like. It's just really almost impossible. And so we thought we would start here. We have reached out, some of us, not only, I'm sorry, is that my time? Regis, dive, but anyway, that is what we need. Is that okay? We, we did start just here and there, reaching out to the office, wondering what we could do, but we were told there isn't a budget, so we decided to come here tonight and maybe see if we can start here and find out how do we obtain a budget so that our kids can have what they need. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you both very much. Would you stand up and show the folks your shirt? Because they are volunteer coaches, not getting paid for this. Bravo.
Can I just ask you a question? Are, are they members of DCFC? Or is it not affiliated with Detroit City? Okay.
It's just, it's called a tribe. It's a league between Ferndale, Cloverlawn, and...
It's not... It's not Royal Oak Football Club. Okay. Okay. So try to communicate. Okay. So Lori can talk to you afterwards. Lori is our Recreation Director, by the way.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else?
I have Anne Marie Mor, is it Morris? Anne Marie Morris.
Hello, councilmembers. Clerk, Attorney and City Manager and everyone here. I just want to say that, it's just my testimony for a moment. I'm a graduate of Oak Park High School back in the 80s, and I've been a homeowner in Oak Park since 80, 92. But I've moved back to Oak Park having been gone for a while, and I'm telling you, it still feels like home. So I am just happy to be here. I was on the Ethnic Advisory Committee back in the 90s, and it just feels good to know that Juneteenth is here. But not only that, I'm just really loving the diversity of the city and everything about it, the neighbors. So it's great to be back. My parents still have their home here. I have a home as well. And to be back here as a resident is exciting. So I look forward to becoming more involved in everything.
We want you to be more involved. We're thrilled that you're back and that you like it. We're putting you on our PR team. Thank you. Thanks for the kind words.
My backbone, by the way. So thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Anyone else? Nope, that's it. Okay. To call to the council, you might notice the folks up here are wearing orange. This is for opposing gun violence. We just take it for granted at this point. It's not until you see comparisons between our country and other country that you realize what kind of craziness we're living in, that other countries don't allow guns like this and people aren't shot every five minutes. I think our, our Director of Public Safety, there was years ago, a fight in a house and four of the five, you know, young men were shot. He said, "In the old days, everybody would go home with a bloody lip or, you know, a black eye or something, and now everybody's got a gun and then everyone's in the hospital." It's just people. Together, we can do this. Let's limit the use of guns in our country. Secondly, I would just like to give a shout out to our Deputy Clerk, Jo Lynn Williams, who took the initiative to go to the Jewish Senior Life Building where seniors live, and to the great delight of the seniors, allowed them to sign up to be on the permanent absentee ballot list. So they were thrilled, and we're thrilled for them. And she is going to go to the second building after that, and I applaud her for taking the initiative to do that. She also helped us register high school seniors right across the street, because if you get used to voting, you tend to vote. You vote because you're kind of used to voting. So we want to get the high school seniors used to it from the very first time they can, and we are going back and registering the new seniors in October so that they can vote as soon as they turn 18. We had a ribbon cutting for the nine 30 units of transit-friendly development. The developer said if the city hadn't invested in Nine Mile Road, he would have put his development somewhere else. And so when you improve the area, it attracts new businesses and good new businesses that we want in our city. So we have attracted Rocco's Pizza. Grandma's from Italy, and she's in the back rolling pasta dough out there. Try it. Pie Sai Pizza has varieties that you can't believe. Next to them is Forest Bakery that is so good, it sells out by 10:30 in the morning. Lots of new businesses are coming, and more are coming still because of what we're doing to make it a better place. And then on that site, Nine Mile, where we have put all the new parks and mini parks and Linear Park, and we had Family Fun Day, our first Family Fun Day on Saturday. Did anybody go? Ah, next year. I'll be looking for you. I took my two grandchildren, eight and four, and they loved it. You could make slime, you could blow bubbles, you could make sand art, you could bounce in the bounce house, and best of all, they gave you free treats. So be sure to make it next time. Solomon Radner is in Israel, talked to a taxi driver who asked him where he's from. He says Detroit. He said, "Isn't it dangerous there?" Okay, then. Mayor Pro Tem. Carolyn Burns.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and your comments. I really like to see our residents be engaged, and in each City Council member, I mean, meeting, it appears as though I see different residents. So thank you, and continue to come out.
Amen. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and I want to thank Ms. Perry? Yes. For bringing this terrible property to our attention, and we're going to take care of it. And also to Kristi and her husband, rest assured, we are working on this. We're upgrading our parks. Oh, you're, excuse me?
We're laughing because we're not here.
Okay. To this unmarried couple.
The mayor does weddings.
Anyway, we're working on it. I see your point. I really do. Anyway, I, I'm really proud of the city for designating June 19th as a holiday, and we are on the move. I like to think of the city as being progressive, and I think we are progressing in the right direction. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. Councilmember Sean Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, my three and a half years on the council, I think this is probably the most historical day yet, and I say that for a couple of reasons. For one, we're up here in orange in solidarity against gun violence, which is an important cause. For two, we passed a resolution establishing Juneteenth as a recognized Oak Park City holiday, and that's just so monumental for the entire community. And it's a long time coming, and I'm so happy that it's happening here in the city, and we're one of the leaders in recognizing this as an official city holiday. Everybody saw it kind of start at the federal level, and now it's trickling down to the cities, and we're one of the first cities to do this, and I'm just so happy about that. And then the last thing is, I know it's an incremental step, but we're taking the first steps on beautifying Greenfield, and I think that's a historical thing as well. And then fourth, and I'm not going to ruin it, or this is the last thing, I won't ruin it, but, because you got to come to State of the City, but what we saw tonight in a special council meeting is just going to be historical for this city for the next 40 years. It's an event hub with an amphitheater, and I'm not going to spoil it, but, oh my goodness, you guys got, I'm excited for it, and I'm excited for everybody to see it. So please come out Thursday night to State of the City at 5:00 and 6:00 in this room so that way you can see it. But we want to start shoveling really, really soon. I know Director DeCosta, I heard, wants to shovel in the ground by fall, so we all are right behind you on that. So, and City Manager's doing a great job of finding the funds and fundraising with the whole admin, so I'm very confident that this project is going to happen and we're going to over-deliver and hopefully be under budget. But if, but please come out Thursday to see that, because it's going to be worth seeing. We've been doing surveys and different polling of the community for the past two years, and it's finally come to fruition with a rough draft rendering, and it's really good. So hope to see everybody later this week. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out, sharing your issues, and that's the way things get done, is we do it together. And everybody who's here is invited to join a board or commission. We'd love to have you. Love to have you. Thank you so much. There being no further business to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned.